And to their public, we would say, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see, it does not look like anybody is here for community comments. You guys look like you're all here for an agenda item, correct? That's okay. Um, we have no presentations and reports, no public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by council member Welch.
Oh, sir.
And a second by council member Pershman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. We sure did not.
Did we did.
Uh, let's do that.
Yeah, I said you threw.
Sorry.
Um.
I, do you want to go?
Go ahead.
I, I move to approve the agenda.
And a motion by council member Welch.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, zooming right along when we go out in order. Up to business items, eight point one, Carver Place, the CDA, uh, project. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've been here. No, I'm having, we'll talk about it later.
They're lovely. Along to Brenda, the way you looked at her?
Brenda gave me some advice today to not be wearing contact lenses. And I thought I had pink eye, so I did.
Oh, sorry.
Brenda kindly was a mother to me and said, take your contacts out right now. I did a virtual visit. I do not have pink eye. My doctor also said, take your contacts out right now. So thanks for that.
I'm sorry, now that we shared that.
Right, I don't have pink eye. That's, yes. Okay, are we ready?
We sure are.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council tonight. Like you said, we're reviewing preliminary plat for a project called Carver Place, which is proposed by the Carver County Community Development Agency. I probably believe mentioned them as the CDA throughout. There are members of that team here, so after my presentation, I'll ask them to come up, introduce themselves. We can have a discussion with the whole group. Them knowing some more of the project specifics, us going through the city process. So again, CDA throughout this presentation is the Carver County Community Development Agency. So looking at what our to-do list is tonight is review of just the preliminary plat. So again, staff presentation, developer info, discussion. And then we are looking for action by the city council tonight on the preliminary plat for Carver Place. I want to make note that rezoning is not required for this project. So typically, this planning commission and city council review those two things together. Rezoning has already happened for this project. So I go through a whole history of the site, but I just want to be, say it loud right now, rezoning is not being considered. It's just preliminary plat. Don't touch your eyes. Okay, so where we're located, the project that we're talking about tonight is highlighted in yellow. So some landmarks that we know. Uh, the big parking lot north of this is Carver Station. So the project where Southwest buses run in and out of on the daily. We're just south of Carver Crossing, north of Oak Tree. So that's the Lennar Development. And then we are east of Copper Hills, which was the Mattamy Development, right along JCP. So this timeline is going to feel like your personal history for some of you, because I know you were involved through a lot of this project, but it has been something that we've been working on and towards for a really long time. So I think it's important to at least highlight some of the major milestones that have happened in the past fourteen years to get us to the point tonight where we're considering preliminary plat for Carver Place. So it begins in 2010. At that point, the CDA purchased thirty-six acres at the corner of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Ironwood Drive. Their first iteration of the project on that property was the CDA offices, City Hall, so moving from downtown, and sixty units of a multifamily site. So when I talk about those thirty-six acres, it's the area highlighted in yellow right now. So the CDA owned this entire corner in 2010. Obviously, it evolved, some projects changed, uh, there are new owners. Uh, but I'll run through some of that. But when I say the thirty-six acres, this is the original highlight of that project. Sorry. Oh, I think I went too far. Okay, we're good. So in 2012, the 2010 project did not move forward, uh, obviously, but in 2012, they submitted for a single multifamily and then the park and ride facility. So those projects become Carver Station, which is the city-owned property for Southwest Transit, Copper Hills, which is the Mattamy Development, and then Carver Crossing, which is the sixty-eight unit apartment complex that we'll talk about throughout this project as well. Twenty thirteen, some of those approvals start coming through. So the CDA applied for a PRD, or a Planned Residential Development, PRD. Something we talk about quite a bit at the planning commission level, a little bit here. We talk about the rezoning to that PRD. I'll go into great detail in the next couple of slides, but when I say rezoning is not required for this project, it's because it was completed in 2013 as part of a master plan project. At that point, Carver Station was sold to the city after we had been awarded the CMAC grant, CMAC grant, which is the congestion mitigation air quality grant through the Met Council. And then the single-family portion of that project sold to Mattamy Homes. So looking at that area, this is the space that we contemplated in 2013 for that R2 PRD. So it's phase one of Copper Hills, Carver Crossing. And then the project that we're talking about tonight were Carver Place and Carver Oaks will sit. So to note on this map, it's a large residential area. The green P there is Olson Park, which was considered for park dedication for Copper Hills. And then obviously, just north of PI is Carver Station, which is city-owned property. So let's talk a little bit about that PRD, the details that are important, things that hold true for this project. So it was originally approved in November of 2013. At that point, we were operating under a previous version of the city's comprehensive plan. So we're operating under the 2008 version of it. And at that point, the project property was guided for medium-density residential, which was four to eight units per acre. So that was the Copper Hills site, the Carver Crossing site, and then this empty site. That whole area was guided to hit four to eight units per acre. So at that point, the CDA owned twenty-seven acres. So take out Carver Station, take out infrastructure to allow for things like ponds, streets, et cetera. Twenty-seven acres were left available for development. So this is where we start to get into some hefty numbers with ranges. So day one, we knew that the project needed to hit four to eight units per acre for the comp plan, and there's twenty-seven acres left. So take twenty-seven by four to get that lowest range, you get one oh nine, the highest range, two eighteen. So we've always, always known the maximum number of units on this collective site could be two hundred and eighteen units. So that's where we started taking out the projects as they had developed. So phase one of Copper Hills was forty-seven, which then decreased the range of available units remaining to sixty-two to one seventy-one. Carver Crossing comes in, takes sixty-eight more of those units. One oh three remain on that site that we can develop, based on the 2008 comp plan, based on the four to eight units required for that density. So the two eighteen total, or the one hundred and three, uh, that are left will get us to that eight units per acre per that comp plan. So I know that was a lot of numbers. That was technical and evolution of how those numbers started, how they changed. But working through that comp plan gave us the ranges and we continue to hit them with each project. So Carver Place tonight is contemplated for sixty units. Forty-three units remain of that one oh three. The CDA recently got some really good news that Carver Oaks, which is a senior-specific project that will be adjacent to Carver Place, was recently approved for funding. So I'll maybe ask Allison to give an update when she comes up on the future project. So right now, we're just contemplating Carver Place, the preliminary plat. We're anticipating that a date in the future we'll be seeing Carver Oaks, which is the forty-three units of senior housing. So we'll run through planning commission and city council as both preliminary and final plat, similar to this process.
Erin, just for, oops. Just for clarification, because I haven't had my calculator out. All these numbers, they equal the two eighteen, the highest number?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So looking at that on the map, again, forty-seven, go to Copper Hills, that Mattamy project, sixty-eight, go to Carver Crossing, one oh three is left remaining on the site. All good? That was a lot of numbers. Okay, thanks. Okay, so let's look at our comprehensive plan. So obviously, the density was set with the 2008 version. We're operating under our current 2040 plan, designed Carver. The density of medium-density residential held true in that plan, so it's continued to be guided that way. So this project is still allowable under the city's comprehensive plan. So you can see there on a map, that's just a PDF, it's a little bit darker, but you can see that it's guided for medium-density residential, the property that's circled in yellow on the right.
So Erin, the only way to increase, we'd have to update the comp plan.
Correct. Yep. Going back to the timeline, we understand that PRD, 2014, the CDA sold two point one acres for development of Carver Crossing. They retained the additional multifamily site. The one that can have one oh three units that we're talking about tonight, Carver Place, Carver Oaks. Twenty fifteen, Carver Crossing approvals moved through the city process. Twenty sixteen, Carver Crossing is constructed by Ron Clark, and it's owned and operated by Stephen Scott Management. So this project is going to look a little bit different with construction and ownership. So the Carver Crossing was Ron Clark, Stephen Scott. This project will be, um, developed, owned, operated by the CDA. So CDA staff will be in this building. I'm gonna ask Allison to share some more information about that too, when we invite her up, about like staffing, how they office out of that space, et cetera. So a little bit different of a project that it will be owned and operated by the CDA. Twenty nineteen, this is when we start talking about those hundred and three units, Carver Place and Carver Oaks. So that's when we saw our first concept plan of this project was 2019. At that point, the CDA and city held an open house at Carver Crossing. So we're in like the community space at Carver Crossing. We met a ton of people from, uh, that building that wanted to come in and hear about the future project. It was a really great open house. It feels like it was a really long time ago. I know a couple of members of you were there, just learning more and sharing information about the project. Twenty nineteen, the planning commission and city council reviewed that concept plan, so you saw it in August. At that point, the project needed to pause due to funding. So the CDA had a funding gap that they could not overcome at that time. So the project paused. At that point, the city continued to anticipate that the project would move forward. Uh, we were in touch with Allison and the CDA pretty often, just getting updates, knowing that they were working towards funding. Just so it's been on our radar as a staff and something that we can continue to talk about in the community. So 2021, uh, related, as one of the strategic plan initiatives, the city council requested that we hold a housing workshop. So at that point, we held a workshop with the CDA. It was a work session. Uh, we shared information about this project, and we also shared a lot of information about really technical terms when it comes to affordable housing. So what's affordable to me is different than you based on our circumstances. So we got into the nitty-gritty of understanding what thirty percent area median income is and sixty percent area median income. So from that, uh, housing workshop, we adopted the housing action plan in 2021 that, uh, had some tools that we could use for, to incentivize affordable housing. The city council reviewed the fee waiver request for this project, which is still active as part of it. So we can talk any of those details as we continue on, but just milestones that the city council has hit. Twenty twenty-two, uh, staff and the CDA continued to work on this project, and we wanted to keep it fresh in your minds. So we had a project preview that hit the city council agenda in February. So you saw an update of it. And here we are in June. No, we're not in June, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the CDA, we held a second open house as we continued on the project. We recognized that a lot of Oak Tree was empty when we had that 2019 open house. So it was important to continue engaging with people as they moved into Oak Tree, which is the neighborhood directly south. So we held an open house on-site on a really hot day. On a property that has zero trees. We all were out there. Uh, again, we met several residents from Carver Crossing. We were able to meet one-on-one with residents from Oak Tree. So at one point, I, I lost track of Brent for a while, and I realized he was in someone's yard in Oak Tree, like looking at a really specific angle of how the building would look. So with someone else. He was not, was not in the yard alone. But it just really allowed us to meet people where they were at, like they were coming home from work. They saw us out there. We got some good feedback about the project. Twenty twenty-three, they made an application for the preliminary plat, which is what we're reviewing now. City council review, sorry, planning commission reviewed this request on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and now it's before you, the city council level. Some information I'll continue to talk about, but the planning commission, uh, is always required to hold that public hearing for the preliminary plat, which was held on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So let's talk about the plan, how it's changed, uh, and how it's the same in some ways. So this is the concept plan that the city council reviewed in August of 2019. This was your first look at the project. Uh, this was the version of the building that had, uh, it was one building. So that's going to be a big change that we talked about tonight. We're now contemplating two. But this was shared space for all one hundred and three units. So again, it was sixty units for general occupancy. Forty-three for the senior-specific with shared community spaces between the building. Uh, frankly, this was kind of a new idea. It was exciting. It was something that felt kind of magical. If you could have general occupancy, people, um, integrating with seniors as well. Unfortunately, again, due to the timing and funding, we've had to pivot a little bit, but a project I hope the CDA can maybe pursue somewhere to have those shared spaces, I think, was a really interesting technique for sharing community space. So this was the version you saw in August of 2019. The planning commission got a really big kick out of this slide. So that two. These are the two biggest ways that the project has changed. So we unfortunately are not considering Carver Oaks tonight, the senior portion due to funding. So it's just, uh, Carver Place, which is the sixty general occupancy numbers, uh, sixty, uh, general occupancy units. And then the second big red X, uh, I don't know if somewhere in the stars, it was written that we would get some feedback from residents from Oak Tree, but they were concerned about parking on that, on the site, just because there are lots back up to that. So it's, those are Oak Tree backyards. We got a lot of feedback about headlights, like how are these headlights going to impact me in this parking lot? When they turn into the parking garage, headlights are gonna shine into my bedroom. What can we do about it? The site sits up a little bit higher than Oak Tree, so a fence wasn't really an option. The elevation made it tricky. So although it was an exciting project to have them both together, the updated version of the site plan solves that issue for us. So the sixty units shift, so there is no parking that's adjacent to Oak Tree. So at no point will headlights be turning into parking stalls that will hit any of those residential units. They'll just go to the building. So a change. Um, so I think that we can look at any project, find the good and the bad, and that's probably one of the really good points is that we were able to mitigate some Oak Tree resident concerns with the change in the building. So again, things to note, cars will not route towards residential homes with the updated layout. This plan also shows a second access on Hartwell Drive, which has always been contemplated as part of this project. And then the shared common landscape space. I know the people at Carver Crossing and some members on the city council love the community gardens that are on the site. Unfortunately, they will likely need to be relocated due to construction, but it's anticipated to have a larger garden area for the two buildings to share. So I suspect that's a concern of a few of the council members, but something that the development team and CDA are thinking about and looking to increase in the updated layout. So an updated version again, from the version you saw in August, 2019. Most significantly, it's split into two buildings. So Carver Place is the east-west building. Carver Oaks is the north-south. Again, we're just contemplating Carver Place, those sixty units in that, uh, east-west, east-west building, not the north-south in Carver Oaks. There's a view of it without large circles. All right, and moving into the plat, you might be asking, this feels like it's something that we don't need to do. The lot already exists. Can't we build this building with just a building permit? But since we're moving forward with Carver Place and Carver Oaks as two separate projects, Carver Oaks through the plating process will be held in outlot, so it won't be developed. We'll need to come back later through preliminary plat and final plat. So the yellow dash line is where the property line is set to be between those two buildings. Look at the plat. All right, let's get into the things that people get excited about, what it looks like. So this is a view of, uh, looking south towards the building. So Oak Tree is going to be behind the building here. So you can see the community gardens, the shared landscape space. There's a landscape plan included in the packet as well as my slides. You'll see there's a generous landscape plan, a mixture of trees, gardening, et cetera. I think rumor has it, there are some samples in the room, so we can get some colors from the development team. Uh, the siding is LP siding and hardy board, so really durable construction material that will last a long time.
Sorry, Erin, um, who owns this centerpiece of Gerasi Noel?
So the CDA will own, is it the entire portion?
Well, Allison and the CDA, there'll be a cross.
Can you come up?
Yeah, well.
Sorry, Allison. Thanks. That's right.
We're almost there.
Is the green light on?
Like, oh, all right, sorry, Allison Strike, the deputy director with the CDA. Um, there'll be a cross easement with, um, actually all three parcels. That'll cover that.
So when you say cross easement, so all.
So some of it is Ron Clark's land and some of it's ours, like the lot line kind of goes right.
So you won't be working together? You'll each have your own little section of it?
No, we'll have a cross easement with them that allows for use back and forth.
Okay, okay. That wasn't my question, because two different entities own this. So I want to know how that worked. Okay.
I suspect you'll come up with like a maintenance agreement as well. So you won't have two different people mowing at the.
Yeah, that's funny. So I'm working on the cross easement with our attorney, and I just whispered to Steve, I'm like, I didn't think about the guard, community guard. There'll have to be something. Forgot about the community gardens, so there'll have to be something additional that, that tackles that piece of it outside of just the easement.
Write that down for me? All of that?
All right, I just have a couple more slides. So before we go to Allison, we'll zip through, and then we can open up the discussion. Okay, so let's get into the nitty-gritty details. Carver Place is sixty units. It's fifteen one-bedroom, thirty-two bedroom, fifteen three-bedroom. There are ninety-five parking stalls on-site, seventy of those being underground, twenty-five in surface level, and there's also indoor and outdoor bike storage. There's also ADA accessibility throughout the building. So some details from the city code based, uh, on the Carver Place project as well. So it meets all the setbacks of the R2 zoning district. So there no deviation is being requested from that R2 PRD that was adopted in 2013. So, uh, things to note, sixty parking stalls would be required here. They're offering ninety-five, which is, I think, important, especially with some of those three, uh, bedroom units, but just something to note that there's adequate parking for the building. Again, another look. And then moving through what the floor plans are. So, uh, the bottom is obviously the parking garage. The first floor, you'll see that there are, um, some community spaces. So a community room, a fitness room, conference room, offices for CDA staff, and lobby and mailroom. Uh, something that is not super fun to talk about, but, uh, semi-exciting is that the trash enclosure is in the underground parking. So that's not something we need to think about. Uh, just when we need to think about what a trash enclosure looks like, this will be in the building tucked away. So again, not super exciting, but something we should think about. So you'll see on the first floor, the mix of the different unit types, showing the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom depicted with the different colors. And then floors two and three. So really similar, again, nice mix of each unit type on each floor. And then moving into the units. So there are floor plans throughout the packet that show some layouts here is an example of the one-bedroom. So they are true one-bedroom, so there's no studio units in this building. So it's a true one-bedroom. Uh, every unit has laundry, and then the one-bedroom, uh, has one bathroom. And then moving into the two-bedroom, it bumps up to two bathrooms. So again, laundry, two full bathrooms, uh, two bedrooms, and then shared living space. And then an example of the third, uh, three-bedroom. So units range with the one-bedroom at seven hundred square feet up to twelve hundred square feet in the three, uh, bedroom units. So here's, uh, some more information about what the building will look like, calling out different materials that will be used. So showing the north elevation as well as the south. So the bottom is if you're standing in Oak Tree looking at the building. So that would be the backside of the building.
So, um, can you go back? So
Sure.
Underground parking is a little exposed, it looks like, because it's into a little bit of a hill there?
Correct. So a landscape plan is included in the packet. So you'll see that there's generous landscaping throughout the property as well as along that property line, shared with Oak Tree. And then it's a mix of Scotch pine, river birch, black hill spruce, and linden adjacent to Oak Tree. So a mix of overstory as well as coniferous trees. And then lighting is something that we think about as well. So as part of the packet, uh, we get a lighting plan. So this is a really technical document that shows essentially the way that light will be on the site. So it's measured in foot candle, which is, doesn't make sense to me in 2024. I feel like we have to come up with something easier. But you can see where the lights are on the property, and you can see that light will not spill off the Carver Place property into Oak Tree or adjacent residential property. So the yellow is the property line. You can see all the light stays within. Again, another look at the plat, which is the technical planning document, which creates the lot where Carver Place can be constructed. Some additional project details. So we don't have a park planned for this area, so park dedication will be fee in lieu of land. So the city will be getting about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars into our park dedication fund. A traffic study was completed in 2012. So that's when we started to understand the two hundred and eighteen units for this site. Everything has always been contemplated at that number. So at that point, uh, we had Bolton and Mink take a look as part of this application process, take a look at that traffic study. We didn't feel like we needed to reinvent the wheel there, since we always assumed that this project would happen. So they looked at the traffic study. They affirmed everything continued to be true. Um, something that was interesting through their review is that the traffic study always called for Ironwood and Jonathan Carver Parkway to be different, to be full build-out. So in 2012, they weren't. They were much smaller streets. So now, sitting in 2024, 2023, when we did the review, we were able to look at that traffic study, and everything worked because the full build-out had fully happened, both on Ironwood and JCP. So Bolton and Mink has affirmed that the 2012 traffic study continues to hold true, that we've always contemplated this amount of traffic, this number of units. Utilities were also constructed for full build-out, and there's capacity available, and the building will be fully sprinkled. So this is, uh, the way that Carver Place will access into our trail system. So it's not required to add much, but there's a little sidewalk there that hooks into our greater trail system along JCP, and then obviously into our larger system, when you either hit Ironwood North or Dollgren Road South. So a really easy way for them to access our trail system. Goes to the bike racks, which is also important. So this project has been reviewed by several city departments, so planning, engineering, legal, fire, and administration. This project required a couple other reviews. So since the project is adjacent to a county road, the county also reviews the project. They came back and did not have any comments. And then the Carver County Water Management Organization, or the CCWMO. So the CDA will be an applicant to the CCWMO to ensure that they can meet all of their rules for construction. So a separate process, but review that's coordinated through the city process with the CCWMO.
And that hasn't been done yet?
So they review the project, and then the CDA will go in for permit.
Okay.
So similar to our process, they get a set of plans, they have comments, the CDA goes back and forth a few times. So they're actively in that process right now, but they haven't applied for the permit yet.
Okay.
So the public hearing was required as part of the plating process. Notice was mailed to property owners within three hundred and fifty feet of the property. So that's all sides of the property line. It's not where the building will sit. It's the physical property line. It's roughly sixty-five homes, as well as all homes in Carver Crossing, which is the sixty-eight units. Notice was also run in the Chaska, Chaska Herald on December fourth, twenty twenty-three. Information was posted at City Hall. The planning commission held that meeting on December fourteenth. Uh, no feedback was received prior to the meeting, and there was no one in attendance at that public hearing. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary plat to the city council on a five-to-zero vote. So one more look at the plat, and I'm almost done, and just a view of the building. So Allison is already here. If we want to open it up for discussion, there's a couple other members of the development team. I know we chatted a little bit about like CDA staffing. So if we could touch on that, and then maybe have the building samples as part of our discussion as well.
Sure. Welcome, Allison.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Um, do you want to give us an overview on CDA staffing and anything else that's top of mind from you?
Um, sure. So right now, our plan would be, um, so during the lease-up, and we're anticipating, uh, a six-month lease-up schedule with our syndicator for this project. Um, we would have a manager on-site five days a week, somewhere between four and eight hours a day. And then once the building's fully occupied, there would probably be three, three days a week between forty-eight hours, which is typical of what we do um, with all of our properties right now, because we do like to have site staff at the main office. Um, and then once Carver Oaks, um, as Erin mentioned, Carver Oaks was recommended for funding by MHFA at their December board meeting. So we will not be too far behind this project. Um, we're hoping to break ground on Carver Place in May or June and Carver Oaks this fall. Um, that site would, would share a manager, a maintenance tuck, and a caretaker. And then happy to answer specific questions that anybody might have about either project.
You seem ready. Go ahead. For Carver Oaks, um, can you, I know that isn't what we're approving tonight, but out of curiosity, what does that look like when it says senior living facility? So is it, is it staffed? Is it assisted? What, what's that criteria?
So it's, um, independent living. Um, and a part of the funding that we're getting for that project is housing infrastructure bonds that has a specific set aside for fifty-five and better properties. Um, so at least one adult household member will need to be fifty-five and older. And then, um, part of the criteria is that the CDA has like services available for resident, like a resident service coordinator that can help connect residents with, um, services. Um, with the bigger picture is enabling, um, residents to age in place.
Mm-hmm, okay. So that, but there won't be a specific person on full-time, because.
So there'll be a manager that will work between both buildings, and then in addition to the manager, we'll have a resident services coordinator, but they won't be on-site full-time, no.
Okay, okay. Um, can you talk a little bit about when people come to live at Carver Place? Um, how does that look compared to, uh, Carver Crossing? Is it kind of the same fee, like, payment structure? Um, how does that work?
So, uh, it, yeah, it would be similar. So Carver Crossings is a nine percent. So, yeah, it would be similar. So Carver Crossings is a nine percent low-income housing tax credit deal. Carver Place, which is our project, is, it's four percent tax credits, it actually has ten different funding sources, which is super fun. So we have a little bit of extra layering when it comes to some of our income requirements, but residents paying an application fee and a security deposit, and then based on what, what type of income they have, so everybody in the project needs to be at or below sixty percent of area median income. Then we further income restricts some units to fifty percent of area median income, and then we also further restrict some of the units to households who are at or below thirty percent of area median income. So what rent bracket you fall into depends on your income limit.
Okay.
And then Minnesota Housing publishes every year the max rents that you can charge based on where the income limits are.
Okay. Can you go back to the picture of the backside of the building? I just wanted to take a look at that. Okay, so Carver Crossing has patios and decks, and this is, when you're looking at the housing development, it sits south of this piece, obviously it sits up higher. Are there going to be decks or patios on the backside of this?
There will not be.
Okay, good. Not looking over into.
There will not be patio decks on either side of the building.
Okay. This question is going to be for you, Erin. So when I was reading this, and just help me make sense of this, so I know how this is working. So when we had this first guided for the twenty thirty comp plan, which was adopted in two thousand and eight, that was the four to eight units.
Correct.
And then the twenty forty calls for five to twelve.
Correct.
So we're technically still in compliance with the twenty forty comp plan, even though the numbers have, because it's four to eight.
Correct.
Five to twelve, but we're at the maximum, right?
So we're going to hit eight. So the twenty, the two thousand and eight plan, the maximum was eight. Our maximum now is twelve. So we went from four to eight, four to eight units per acre in the previous plan, five to twelve in the current. So eight falls right between that, five to twelve units per acre.
So we can say, although this was initially at a four to eight, we're still in compliance with our twenty forty.
Correct, yes.
I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I had a couple. So just for the CD, how many other units in Carver County does, do you own and like manage versus just supply funding for?
So right now, we have approximately seven hundred and fifty units, so we have ten other properties and about a hundred scatter sites, which are single-family and townhouses throughout the county.
So this isn't your first one you'd be managing?
No, and we own and manage all of our units.
Okay. And then, I guess this is maybe for you and Erin, on, on that, again, that south side, I know some of the initial plot had the stormwater pond. Is that fairly secure in the location with the water management? Is that some of the things we're, we're working through?
Correct, yes.
And then also notice that some of the, the trees along that side were the, you know, the linden, the larger, again, is that on purpose, obviously, to try and create a barrier to?
Correct. When we are attempting to do like a landscape buffer of any type, we usually do a mix of trees.
Sure.
Just because coniferous offers more screening early, where an overstory tree can take decades to get to the point where it provides some screening, so we typically go for a mix.
Okay. And then, maybe again, more technical, when we split it into two buildings, are we sure, sure we have enough space for the stormwater retention ponds and that kind of stuff? Are they still working through that, right, where, is one building treated differently by the Water Management Authority or the city in terms of, you know?
So the CCWMO has gotten the same version of plans that the city has, so we know, they know that both projects are happening, but they'll have a similar review process. So Carver Place and Carver Oaks will be reviewed separately as preliminary plat and final plat, but overall, we've always anticipated
Both, okay.
Both buildings, a full buildout.
Excellent.
That is all I had.
Right.
Any shared amenities planned between Carver Place in the future? Forty-three units, and they're not connected anymore.
So now, no, now that they're not connected, unfortunately, because of how the funding worked, I think our goal will still be to have some type of coordination of like activities where maybe we'll invite folks from the general occupancy building over to the senior building to, to still do some of the activities we thought we would do when it was going to be one building.
Architecturally similar, because they're so close in construction?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have a few questions. More curious, because I remember with Carver Ridge, the current senior housing that also has the assisted living and memory care, they, I had gotten feedback once that they wished they could have went three stories. So you guys can go taller. It looks like you'd go fifty feet, but you're, you're not. Is that just, like, that wasn't in your budget, or if somebody asked me, well, why didn't they make it bigger, you know, there's such a need?
Are you talking about the senior building?
The, the one tonight, not.
Carver Place.
Carver Place. Yeah, just Carver Place.
That might be a Jorgan. I know there's a specific reason.
Okay.
Answer that better than I can.
Hi, I'm Jorgan Brandt with Coswells and Architects. I've been the one drawing this project and heavily involved for the past several months and years, so yeah. We kept Carver Place at three stories for this building. It was based on what was submitted in the previous rounds for MHFA funding. So we didn't change the size or really the unit mix of the family affordable side at all from what we had previously attempted to get funded in the past. And then, in my working on it, since I've come onto the project, it was funded already, so we didn't change the mix up from what Minnesota Housing had approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Something else to note, the height requirements that were approved. So the maximum height in the, of the building was forty feet. The building right now is thirty-four. So an additional floor would likely require an additional amendment to that PRD.
But isn't that the part where if PRD fifty feet?
Oh, yeah, you're right. It is part of a PRD. You're right. Forget I said that.
We've run into the unillimit though, right? Presumably if we added another floor, we'd have, we'd exceed the density?
Potentially, yeah. Yep.
But regardless, they don't have, that's.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
And then I have another question on, knowing that, looks, that you'll be asking to do the Carver Oaks, then with, when it comes to the stormwater facilities, so in, what I want to make sure is that doing the two projects separate doesn't cost the city more money from stormwater facilities? Or is that part of the developer's agreement, like if?
Correct. So they will need to construct the stormwater facility. It will continue to be on private property, so at no point will it go into like a city-owned outlot. So essentially, we don't have additional costs based on the stormwater for the two separate projects.
Okay. And this, and you can tell me, this is too soon, we don't know, pets. There, maybe, maybe if I knew more about the other properties that you manage.
No, we, we do not allow pets, except at buildings where we are required to. And those are generally federally subsidized projects where we are required to allow pets.
Interesting. Wow, okay.
Service and companion animals are different from this.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
All right. I just have a list of questions. Thank you for anticipating a lot of them and already answering them. So at first, and Erin, you were helpful with this, the parking, especially the surface parking, seemed light, with the understanding that there is underground parking, but I know that potentially, and maybe not tonight on the coldest night of the year, but potentially, in the existing lot in Carver Crossing, it gets pretty packed in the evenings. Is there going to be any policing of who's parking on what side of the lot, and who's, especially for the, the surface level parking?
So the CDA, we use parking stickers at all of our properties, so we, I mean, we'd be able to tell if, if need be, if we had concerns whether or not somebody was a CDA resident or not.
Okay, super. Community gardens? I know that Erin went over it at a high level, but will there be a season because of construction that the community gardens will?
Probably this summer, yes.
Okay, okay. I know that that's super important, so if there's any kind of workaround, understanding that it's going to be a messy site.
Yeah, just, just looking at where they're located from Google, Google actually went through that parking lot loop, which was super helpful for us. Unfortunately, Carver Crossing's community gardens are probably just a little too far to the curb line of where the parking lot will be constructed, so we'll have to shift them slightly, but we've got in our site plans moving those and constructing about the same amount of additional ones for this building as well, so essentially doubling the gardens that are there.
Great, okay, super. That'll be good news, and then probably a discussion to have it a different day, but I think from the city side, we should get creative in how we can help accommodate those folks with our existing community gardens this summer when they will be without. Let's see, can you go to the side of the trail access? I think it's in one of those areas.
Does this work?
Yeah. I see the, on the east side, I see the trail access to the trail that goes along Jonathan Carver Parkway, but will there be sidewalks on the entrances to Hartwell?
No, the Hartwell side, the road does not have a sidewalk currently, and we don't plan to construct one to it because of the grades kind of coming down to the pond there.
Okay. That seems like amiss to me, because I'm thinking of kids walking to school. Is there an existing one on that exit to the north?
I can see it on one of my first ones.
I don't remember if it exists or not. Yeah, yeah, I think there is.
There's a sidewalk out that way?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Here.
Does it lead to Hartwell, then?
Yeah, but there's a sidewalk along. I just wasn't sure if there was one on the road. Okay. That's just the one thing. I'm just thinking of, you know, elementary school kids will clearly walk to Carver Elementary, but middle and high schoolers, if the bus stop is there, I just want to make sure that they have a safe way to get to the bus stop.
And we're just at preliminary plat right now, so we can continue to explore that.
Okay, super. Let's see, you answered and anticipated my question about the ETA for Carver Oaks and for the timeline for this project. The only other question that I have for you is, what is AMI for our area in twenty twenty-four?
Hmm.
Sorry.
That's a hundred, a hundred percent of AMI right now, I think, is about a hundred and eighteen thousand, so.
Is that for a family of four?
For a family of four, correct. So seventy-ish thousand, seventy-five thousand for sixty percent of AMI for a household of four.
Okay, super.
And then obviously, it depends on how many members are in the household, so if it's one person, it's less.
And then with the Ron Clark, there was an agreement that it had to be affordable for something like thirty years, if memory serves. I know you had a mention of it in the packet.
So we took, we took points for extended affordability, so ours will remain affordable. I mean, the CDA maintains everything long-term affordable, but part of our points with MHFA, our regulatory agreement is forty years.
Okay, super.
And that tracks for, the City Council reviewed the fee waiver for the project, so waiving the connection fees for a portion of this project. Part of that needed to be that the project would be affordable in perpetuity, so their requirement of the forty years meets our requirement of that fee waiver as well.
Okay, super. That's it for my questions. I would like to piggyback on, we talked about the sidewalk possibly coming in. Can, there, there is no tot lot any longer between these two buildings, right? If we went back to the original plan, there was a senior living, the other units, and then there was a tot lot that was planned in there. So there's no longer any tot lot that's going to be included in this part of the project between those two.
There is not, because the, the community park that's right across Hartwell meets the requirements for MHFA for a tot lot.
Okay, then that doubles up on the sidewalk issue. That's along, Erin, can you please go back to like an aerial-type photo?
Sure.
Thank you.
Was that helpful?
Yes, yes. So when we're looking at this, where the sidewalk ends, and if we're expecting kids to walk around to get to that park, we're asking a long ways, I'd like to, I would like to see sidewalk to give them dual options if that's going to be their park.
Sure.
Location. And with that, we'll probably have to be careful of the street crossing then, because that's a mid-block crossing.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we'll come up with a solution that feels perfect, but we can definitely explore some options.
Okay, great. We're good, we're good, all right. Without that, I would entertain a motion.
Hi, I move to adopt resolution one zero three dash twenty-four, approving preliminary plat for Carver Place.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Welch.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Perchman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion passes. Right, thank you. Oh, a little late, but you brought the samples. I wanted to see those.
We have some samples, yeah, updated color scheme. Same materials as were shown in that rendering, we just changed the colors a little bit based on what's available to us in our area right now. So all from James Hardy, all pretty neutral colors.
Can you tell me what we're looking at? Siding?
Yeah, so we're looking at the siding and trim color, and then the foundation block color.
Oh.
So what you'd see at the back of the building.
Cool.
It ties in with these, so it kind of all blends together. We did a darker tone on this one for kind of the bottom half, and it kind of gets lighter as you work your way up. It's a mix of lap siding and shake siding, so it looks like cedar shakes. That's kind of this lighter beige tone.
Okay.
And yeah, those are just uses accents, but it's pretty, pretty traditional-looking building to kind of fit with the neighboring houses. Has touches kind of that, maybe Craftsman accents that kind of goes with the neighboring homes, so.
Very cool. Thank you for bringing in the samples. Definitely not a requirement, but absolutely bonus points for being able to see it and make it a little bit more tangible.
Yeah, it's nice to see the colors we're planning.
Yeah, especially when we're looking at a green building, to know that it'll be a little bit different than what we're looking at.
I like the green building.
I think that's a green.
We liked the green building until we saw the actual color.
That particular green wasn't available in the options, so we had to pivot.
Okay. We had to pivot. Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to item eight point two, fire hydrant tampering ordinance. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Four years in jail minimum.
Right.
Water.
The water. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor and, and Council. So, yes, I provided a summary in the staff report for this item. You'll recall, in November, at the second meeting, there were some concerns raised by both the council and staff about people tampering with and using the city hydrants without permission. A number of concerns come from that. Obviously, we don't want people taking water without paying for it, that's one. The other thing, which to me is more significant, is they don't necessarily know how to effectively use these devices and hook up to them without causing damage. And so, from a public safety standpoint, it's important that, that that doesn't happen. And so, this is a very straightforward ordinance. As you can see, it prohibits anybody from using city hydrants, tampering with them, drawing water from them without permission from the city. And of course, violation like most of our ordinances would be a misdemeanor under state law. That's, means up to ninety days in jail, up to a one thousand dollar fine, or both. And what I mentioned in here as well is that, you know, if something were to happen, where someone were to do this, damage a city hydrant, get charged with it, the city could also pursue restitution in criminal court. And I know the prosecutors and the court system has usually been very sympathetic to those situations, has done what it's can to make sure the city's made whole. So that's, while not specifically addressed in the ordinance, that sort of restitution would be also involved with any, with any prosecution. So, again, it's a straightforward ordinance. We don't even have a summary resolution because it's so short. We can just publish the entire ordinance, and there's really no cost savings in doing more than that. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. Oh, the one thing I'll point out too, on page two of the, the staff report, I know staff located some markers to put on fire hydrants that will notify people that, look, these are city hydrants, you can't use them, you can't connect to them, and if you violate, you can be prosecuted. Hopefully, that puts people on notice of this. I don't know why, it's, it's customary or common for people to do this, but, you know, we're trying to change the narrative and, and scale back from that becoming a, or being an ongoing customary practice. So, again, happy to answer any questions.
My only question is, if we're looking at these fire hydrant rings, how, I mean, how many fire hydrants is that? How much is that going to cost?
I think, by the way, special thanks to Brenda Good for finding those. I think we're going to, we think we started talking about maybe like getting like a hundred or a hundred and fifty and doing the ones that are, you know, in more of the re- and doing the ones that are, you know, in more of the remote locations and then overtime building, but I think, what was the number, like ten to fifteen per?
If we order more than a hundred, the price drops down to seven seventy-five each.
Okay, okay, that's, that's great. And I mean, let's be real, we're talking about higher construction areas, right? Because we have less people there during, with, you know, open construction, and that's where we're seeing probably most of the problem.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I imagine you guys know the hot spots in town for stealing.
Big waters.
Yeah, thank you for anticipating my question. Any other questions?
I have one question. It references that if somebody wants to, they need to get written permission, except for city employees. Just so that, I mean, I don't want anyone to, you know, get that permission, but maybe there's some like really outstanding circumstances. How do they do that? Just so that, I don't want to say, okay, you have to ask us for it in writing, and then it's not clear how to do that, even though it could possibly turn, be turned down.
I think they could contact anyone from the city. I mean, obviously, you know, the phones are on at City Hall during business hours, so if there's a bona fide need for water for some reason.
Just a normal.
Yeah, they would reach out to the city, public works.
Doesn't have to be so formal, like a.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't put that in the ordinance, but you know, my thought would be those instances will be so few and far between that we don't even need to worry about letting people know. It, it probably would be a situation where water was needed for some random reason in a location, and there's going to be city personnel out there already looking at it, and so they're going to be part of the process. I don't even know of a, a good example, but it could be situations.
We have a bulk water machine at the public services facility on Jonathan Carver Parkway, so in like ninety-nine point nine percent of instances, that would be the recommendation.
Okay.
The language of the ordinance just covers, you know, this point one percent of the time where there might be a, a reason for the city to allow that in our best interest. And so we wouldn't necessarily establish a form, it would be by contacting public services or myself and working through that issue.
Okay, thank you.
If there's, maybe if there's a special event happening somewhere and there's a hydrant nearby and they're, they're using water for something. Or, or a tank, I, I don't know, but you know, there, there's ways that permitting would get them through that process too. So to Bren's point, I think the point one percent is probably not going to happen very often, and we'll just have to deal with it on a.
I just want to get the feedback, thank you for bringing this to us so fast because it's just a few meetings ago that we talked about it.
Yeah, thank you for being able to react so swiftly to this. I feel like it's a really silly thing, right? The water, the water pirate act?
Water pirate act of twenty twenty-four.
But here we are, we wouldn't be talking about this if it wasn't an issue. And unfortunately, it seems like super benign, let's just tap a hydrant and it'll be fine, but it's causing some really significant issues with our water system. So I am not kidding when I say I would love to see four years in prison, but that's probably a little bit heavy-handed, but I, I appreciate you being so reactionary on this. With that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-four, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-two of the Carver City Code prohibiting non-authorized use of fire hydrants, lovingly referred to as the.
Water.
Water pirate. I will second. Eric came up with that. That terms only in a second to am, a motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by council member Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Brent, strategic plan update.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. Excuse me, in your packet is our first strategic plan scorecard update from twenty twenty-four. Just kind of really getting after some of the things that we did at the tail end of twenty twenty-three. Of note is just all the work that we did related to the long-term financial plan and the work along the county road forty corridor. I think that the biggest piece that I'd like to share and get the council thinking about is the impending community survey and how that intersects with strategies related to community engagement and communication. There is an endless amount of paths you can go down as it relates to engaging with the community, and I think, as we've talked about before, that's more of a journey than a destination. And going through some of kind of our recent issues where we've had a lot of high contact. It feels like anecdotally, a lot of folks still appreciate kind of like the paper mail and that the digital gets kind of lost in this endless sea of opportunities to engage, whether it's social media, website, what have you. And so asking a series of questions on how to get information to folks, you know, getting maybe better line of sight of how our newsletter is viewed and other types of information. But preaching to the choir here, as you know, when it becomes a issue of significance, you know, any kind of failure or learning on how that communication or engagement was done can quickly become the center of the issue, and so as a, you know, staff and team, you know, we want to make sure that we're responding quickly and efficiently, but the mechanism to, you know, have that communication delivered is also critical. So this kind of may be more of a commercial and thinking about, you know, what types of questions you want to ask as a council to get that feedback so we can build a future communications and engagement plan.
So when we did our strategic planning session, didn't we socialize an app?
No, we talked about an app. I think the, everything that we have geared was towards building a plan and an app could be part of that. It was discussed. Our plan is to kind of build, whether it's an app or whatever other vehicles you use, is to build it as a part of a comprehensive plan that gets at kind of all of it.
Sure, well, we talked about reaching people where they are.
Yes, correct.
Typically, this is where they are.
Yeah, yes. And we, and Brenda and I have done some research, the, the platform that we're moving to for kind of the mass email system, that's also our website vendor, has an app. And so we've done a webinar on it with them or kind of a product review. It's a little on the expensive side, so we wanted to kind of package that as a suite of options for the city council to consider, whether it's in the twenty twenty-five budget or going forward, because ultimately, there'll probably be a number of things you'll want to consider, and then prioritizing that, looking at what might have the biggest impact, or, you know, some of the next steps. But those are, those are the highlights, happy to answer any questions or if there's any clarification pieces you want to ask related to a certain topic, happy to answer those as well.
Any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, under responsive development, so the targets, we have a number of jobs increased from, or twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. So it says sixty-seven employees are added in twenty twenty-three. I have to laugh because when I first like went by that, I was like, what?
To the city.
I wonder how this reads to other people, that's what it was. Like, you know, I obviously know we did not hire sixty-seven employees, but I just was wondering how that read to anyone else who looked at it. So if there's some type of rewording you want to look at for the future.
We could just add jobs.
Sure, sounds good. And then on that, how do you, no, how do you find out?
I ask.
So you just, a new company comes in, you say how many people you're hiring?
Yeah, so a lot of commercial parking calculations are based off number of employees, so it's part of our review.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just had a question on the community survey, that was a little bit before I joined. So what, what is the timeline for that, just a quick thirty seconds?
Yeah, so it's the, I can't recall if it's your next meeting in February or your second meeting, but the city hired the Leatherman Group, so Peter Leatherman, who does almost every community survey in the metro for schools and cities. It's a full-on survey, he'll come out and do a presentation on kind of all the intricacies of that, along with kind of a ballot of test questions or sample questions. And then the last time we went through it, the council just had suggestions for tweaks or adds or deletes. And then we came back with a second draft, and then they conducted the survey and then reported the results kind of in a macro, and then we produced a residence guide to that. And so what's exciting relatively, or in a relative term about this, is that we'll have a data set from three or four years ago to compare, as long as you ask, you know, at least in some instances, the same question, so you can measure success or opportunities for growth.
Do we have a target and we want to have the survey out to residents or selected? Like when, when, I know, I wouldn't, I guess when would they start the phone survey?
That would be all based on kind of the direction and.
Once we finish the question, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Peter will be able to answer those questions based on, you know.
How many revisions do we make?
When we finalize our questions and then how we queue in the order of other surveys that they're doing. It's a relatively like short window though, I mean, they get it done pretty quickly.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, monthly reports, anything on?
Yeah, I just have, I asked, you know, the city had quite a bit of engagement related to the community park and the skate park removal, so I, Erin and I have been talking about it, and Erin's been doing some just kind of preliminary research and background on the issue, so I asked her to kind of summarize those comments and engage the council in a little bit of a discussion. So this is, you know, normally this would be like a work session item, but because that kind of got scrunched, we're kind of rolling it into this session.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So I want to start off by giving a little bit of information of how this came to be, how we got to the point we're at right now. So monthly, we have a parks meeting, so it's a group of city staff, so it's me, Brenda Good, Natalie Meyer, Eric Madigan, who is our parks lead, Paul Schultz, who's our superintendent, Brent, Chad. So a large group of us get together every month to talk all things parks. So we talk about things ranging from when is that BIF going to be replaced to this new project that's coming in, we're starting to work on this park, what do you all think about it? So at the November parks meeting, we got some information from the public services team that the skate park was in disrepair, so it got to a point where they no longer felt like they could get it to a place that felt safe to have residents on it. So the skate park that we had was twenty years old, primarily made of plywood, it's outside all the time. So plywood that's been exposed to the elements for that long deteriorated. It wasn't for a lack of attempt and trying by our public services team, it just was really old equipment that had lived its life in the city of Carver and was used pretty heavily. So I've learned a lot about modular skate parks in the past couple of days. So my first contact was Jonathan Nelson at Bolton and Mank, he does a lot of our park programming. He works across the metro, so he was able to give me some feedback about companies to call, other people who have done recent projects like ours. Through that, I learned that not many people are doing modular skate parks anymore. So there's one company that offers the service, it's called American Ramp Company. Every other skate park is moving to concrete or the version that we have in ironwood. So getting these ramps is starting to be a little bit tricky. So the company that we originally got the pieces from is no longer in business, which also limited the amount of repair that we could do. So at that point, the skate park was removed, it was posted to Facebook, and we got a lot of engagement, which is great. That's the thing, a lot of people could look at that and say like, dang, the city got so many comments about it, like, that's helpful. It gets us to having conversations like this. It also tells us what's really important to people in the community. So reading through the comments, largely just messages being shared of disappointment because it's a heavily used skate park. That's something we know to be true, when we worked at the fire station, it was our front yard, so I saw kids on there all the time, it was kind of scary sometimes, but those kids were killing it. So I reached out to American Ramp Company, which is again the only company that's offering these modular ramps at this time. And they gave me a ton of feedback. I explained where we were at, the equipment that we had, how long it had been outside, and they were a little bit shocked that we've had it for as long as we have and that it's usable. They shared that the equipment that if we started today, it would, it should have only held up for about fifteen years. So credit to our public services department, they were doing work to keep it up, but it definitely lived its life. So the American Ramp Company looked at our park, they put together some numbers for us. A rough estimate is one hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand to essentially replace the skate park that we had, that's using the existing slab. It's just the elements that would be added to it. So we don't have a budget for that in twenty twenty-four, but a conversation we're wanting to start at the city council level is wondering if we would like to include something in the twenty twenty-five budget. At that point, should the council move that direction? We're looking to get some feedback from the Parks Advisory Group, just to hear from them, learn from them a little bit about the process too, to figure out, like, were there other ways that we could have communicated this? Like, the message hit a lot of people in a way that they came to us disappointed where, like, how can we share that information better? How can the park advisory group have that information to be advocates for the process? So looking for some feedback from the city council if you'd like to continue exploring that idea. Saying yes tonight doesn't mean it's automatically going in the twenty twenty-five budget, but will give us direction to continue exploring the idea, work through some ideas with the Parks Advisory Group. So again, American Ramp would likely be the group that would be providing the service at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to one fifty. Just for reference, Ironwood Park, the park that we just completed with the new skate park, the concrete version, which was done by a group called Spawn, was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Park dedication was able to be used for that amount. The one twenty-five to one fifty would not be eligible for park dedication, so.
It's not operating in maintenance once it's taken out, tell me how it, the park dead won't work for it.
It's not a new feature, it's replacement of existing infrastructure.
Okay.
Dave's looking up, do you have a different idea?
Ooh, look at that.
So I had a, so what about the park in general? When was our last like community park plan? Do we have other, like, the playground equipment, is that getting towards its end of life as well? I mean.
Yeah, so.
Presumably.
We added the new one in roughly what, twenty fourteen, fifteen?
We did.
I think that was one of my last projects in twenty fifteen.
And over this.
That's not the bigger one, that's the smaller one.
Right, and over the summer, as we moved to the ten-year park plan, I gave a presentation about the different parks. The city council was tasked putting us in the direction of either replacement of the shelter or the playground. The council said shelter at that time, so that's the direction we're going to start going down. So our parks team does maintenance on all of the facilities, they do rounds, they check the equipment to make sure it's safe and operable. So a community park, the playground, doesn't have any concerns right now, so it's generally in shape that's usable. Can I pause, read Dave's thought about park dedication made me want to think about it.
I just want to make sure I heard that correctly, so the issue is can we use park dedication for the new equipment? Not for maintaining the, because it sounds like the existing equipment is dilapidated and it's, you can't.
Correct.
You can't fix it or maintain it.
Yep.
I just want to confirm, but I, I might, I, I think we can probably use it for that sort of thing. I mean, yes, it's similar equipment, but the prohibition in the statute, and I just pulled it up to make sure I was remembering it correctly, is you can't use it for ongoing operation or maintenance of existing facilities. But when we're, to me, if you're replacing equipment, that's new equipment, and so I would argue that's not maintenance, that's providing a new amenity. And if that equipment is now gone and unusable, I think that's the argument is. So I, I'd look at that a little bit more and decide if I feel comfortable with it, but.
Let's pause it because I want to talk to you about something outside of this room. But something to think about.
That's fine, but I would like our city attorney to legally tell us whether that is.
Yeah, for sure.
If, if he says go, that is fantastic. Yeah, it's a, that's the difference in my mind. Because we're talking a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, one sec.
Well, a lot of money regardless of where it comes from, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of money in a twenty-five budget.
So if this project can be funded through park dedication, I want to be really clear that we also have other park priorities, so we're not planning to do this work right now, we weren't planning to spend the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we started looking at Lions Park to do the tennis court. So if you'll remember the ten-year parks plan, we showed the condition of the tennis court, we're looking at converting it to pickleball, that slated for twenty twenty-four, I think at around three hundred thousand dollars. So even if it can come from park dedication, we have some priorities that we also need to think through, like we're starting to track for Creekside Park, which is the DNR park. There's a three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar match that's required out of park dedication. We're starting to think about the downtown park, so I would just ask that as you start thinking about this number, think about where it falls into park priorities for you too, to say, if we can use park dedication, taking that hundred and fifty thousand dollars might push the downtown park a little ways away, just because it's taking funding from. from something we're already starting to kind of conceptualize on our to-do list.
When is the Carver Place Park Dead hitting our?
So at a time of recording, so depending on when final plaque comes in.
Give your best guess.
April or May.
Okay, so is that already included in our planning that we have? Like, is that budgeted in our future?
Yes.
Park plans?
Yep.
Okay.
So it might come back as park dedication. It might not, but it was something that's important to us is knowing, is this a priority? Do you want us to continue the conversation? What should it look like?
And I think it is, it maybe it is something that we look to, something else gets pushed back a little bit. We've heard from the community on this, right? So I think it's definitely worth looking into all the funding avenues that we can and seeing what we come up with.
If it's a question for a community survey, because, like, respectfully, I appreciate the folks that we heard from on Facebook, and that's absolutely the kind of engagement we want. I'm sorry that it made folks feel like there wasn't a discussion available to have. I think we learned something from it, but I also think, you know, we heard from maybe two dozen people out of sixty-five hundred people in the city of Carver. So I think it's always relative.
Right, but I also think it's fair to say that we, I mean, we, on the flip side, say, well, we're not always monitoring Facebook, so we don't always respond to everything. So I think we should expect that from the community, that they're not always monitoring everything that comes on Facebook either. And outside of the Fa, the Facebook, I mean, I've heard from many people. Yep, I've heard from many people, just verbally, who have talked to me about it or who have texted me about it, that isn't, that isn't something that came out as a, as a message or a notice on Facebook, so.
I was gonna say, I think we should definitely add it to the list of park projects, but I'm not sure where it is on priority of, you know, versus funds for other, you know, future park development. But I think we should, like Christie said, we did get response, so it is definitely something that is used and would, I would like to see it replaced. I just, you know, Erin's just trying to balance it with their other park projects, but I definitely think we should.
Anyone else? Oh, Bren. Oh, sorry.
Eric.
I would imagine there was going to be some cost to repurpose this for something else if we did that.
Correct, yep. We were exploring ideas of like maybe having a leisure rink there, out so, another ice skating rink or pickleball potentially.
Well, I've got a soft spot in my heart for this because it was the first project I ever worked on in the city with Christie when I was in my thirties.
I wasn't even in my thirties yet, Eric.
And it, it certainly is a heavily utilized city asset, so we should have at least given some attention and hope, I hope Dave comes back with a positive that we look in our future.
So just, what I'm hearing is that the council's interested, after maybe Dave does some research and like having a work session conversation about, you know, just kind of running back that parks presentation and understanding how our park dedication projects are aligned with our capital projects. I think on timing, we just want to make sure we don't, as a staff, get in front of the council, that if there isn't some type of informal alignment on the skate park, that we don't get a bunch of community members excited and then put unintentional pressure on the council to like make that choice. So I don't. On timing, you know, it'll probably, we're talking maybe the next work session?
Yeah, I can get you an, I can get you an answer quickly.
Okay.
We don't expect on the five, five minutes.
So like the next work session, and then we just need to know, like, you know, and we can, we can think on this until your, the meet, your next work session, but like, you know, would you, how quickly would you want Erin to engage if that ended up being your priority, or do you want to use the community survey as part of that informative information? So just a couple of things to think about, but we can start with packaging some parks information and Dave's information into Erin's presentation for the February third work session.
Erin, did they?
That's a Saturday. No, that's not going to work.
But at sixth? Fifth?
Thirty-three percent.
Okay.
Did the.
You could have just agreed and let it go.
Someone might be interested in the next meeting now.
Okay.
Did the supplier give any idea of lead times on skate equipment? It's not like water infrastructure. Six, six to nine months, right?
Well, so we would be contemplating, we'd be contemplating this in the twenty twenty-five budget, so we have some time. Since we've already engaged, I have a contact there. He sent me some examples, so.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Bren? All right. Council updates.
I have had no Southwest Transit meetings, so I'll update.
Lori, I've not had any meetings other than here. Inflection, match inflection. Go ahead. Look, Percy.
Yeah, so our HPC meeting this month was canceled as well. I do want to mention that the Soggy Bottom is coming up for our snow golf tournament fundraiser on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, so the last Saturday of this month. It's down at Riverside Park. This will be our final Soggy Bottom. We have decided to retire the event after the fifteen-year mark. So if you haven't been there, or if you have been there, you should absolutely come, absolutely come this year, because again, you'll be able to celebrate the, the last one. We all know that this event was started by Mr. Greg Osterdike and a couple of other folks. I came in as just a helper at that point, but I've been doing it with, for fifteen years, I did talk to Lori Osterdike about it, so she is aware that we will be retiring this. She's going to do her best to stop down also. So come down. You don't have to register to play. You can come down and have a beverage, hang out by the fire.
Will hats be for sale?
And what was that?
Will hats be for sale?
Yes. So hats are part of your registration, or you can buy one for the exact same dollar amount, twenty-five dollars.
Percy is my witness. You do not have to play golf. You can go down, get a hot dog, get a beverage, hang out by the fire, and still have a lovely time.
Yep, exactly. Thank you.
Great.
I have no updates.
All right. A few quick updates from me. If you are even the smallest amount interested, apply for a commission. Not you guys, you can't. But trying to reach out to some folks and make sure that we've got a robust applicant pool for commissions. Those are due next Thursday, which is the twenty-ninth. Is that correct? That applications are due? I think they're due by the twenty-ninth. Okay, the twenty-eighth. CityofCarver.com for details. Let's see. Couple of meetings we, last Monday, January eighth, I had a regional council of mayors meeting. Heard from a futurist and heard from the executive director of Global Minnesota, really interesting. After presenting in front of the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, I followed up, actually, the chair of the board followed up with me, and I followed up with him, and I always offer folks who are interested in our levy project, like, come out to Carver, see it, let's walk the levy. We did that last week. So Joseph Barazoni came out, and we talked a little bit more. It was before it got cold, so we had to walk the levy and showed him what we're talking about, to make this project that we can PowerPoint to death really tangible. So potentially have some really cool opportunities to have kind of a next level partnership with them. More details to come, being intentionally vague. Let's see. League of Minnesota City's Day on the Hill is Thursday, March seventh. For those who haven't attended, it's always a fun day to go out and meet with your legislators. I, in the past handful of years, have used it as an opportunity to kind of further and remind folks that we're still looking for money for the levy project. But it's also just another really good league event. So mark your calendar. Speaking of, I guess, all things St. Paul today, it was kind of breaking news on the evening newscast that Governor Walz proposed a bonding bill of nine hundred and eighty-two million dollars, with nearly half of that going towards shoring up existing state infrastructure. From what I was able to tell, it looks like he has six million dollars for the cost share grants for the DNR's flood mitigation program, which is where we've received our money from the state so far. So that seems like a low number to me, given that we need three million dollars of that. But as I think we all know, that there is still a whole lot, a lot, a lot of horse trading that takes place in St. Paul between now and the end of the session. Let's see. I did want to make a request. I got an email, a woman who lives in Spring Creek reached out to me saying that they hadn't received email for, or I'm sorry, hadn't received snail mail, mail, for a number of days because somebody was parking in front of their mailbox. I checked with Brent. It seems like another one of those, like, really logical things. You don't park in front of mailboxes, but we don't have an ordinance prohibiting that. So there's no teeth and other than saying like, hi, could you move your car? So I wanted to see, I don't know, Dave, if you were able to follow up on that, if that's something that we can do?
Yes, some cities do it. There's no state law that prohibits it, so it would have to be in the city's parking ordinance, which we looked at, just if you remember, a year or two ago, to update some things and add some language. But we could add a prohibition on, you know, parking in front of people's mailboxes. You know, my thought would be the prohibition would only, a couple of the examples that I looked at, it only applies, you know, on mail days between like eight AM and six PM, when mail is delivered. There's a, there's a window of time when mail is delivered, so it wouldn't apply on weekends. It wouldn't apply on, you know, federal holidays when mail is not delivered. But that way, the city would have some teeth if people called and complained about people blocking mailboxes, because obviously it can be frustrating if you can't get your mail. I guess I never knew what, what the postal workers did. I didn't know. They just blew by your house and didn't deliver your mail. I thought maybe they would get out of their car, but maybe when it's five below, they're less willing to do that.
I think the woman who reached out to me said that the postal worker put a note on the car, but they still didn't get mail.
They actually have like a, like a form, I believe, that they use, like it's a card they put on there that says. No, I don't think it's just a handwritten one. I think they have something that they put that says you're blocking this, or you're going to get your mail.
So I guess the bottom line is if the council's interested in adding a prohibition in your parking ordinance about that, then it would be a petty misdemeanor like other parking violations, where someone could get a ticket and have to pay a little fine if they were to do something in violation of the ordinance, we're happy to put that together and bring it to the council for a future meeting and consideration. I'd look for the council for guidance on that.
I would like to see that. Do I have support on that?
I have one question before we go to that. Erin, this is probably for you. So a lot of the new developments, do they have the cluster mailboxes, or do they have a single mailbox per?
It's mostly cluster.
Mostly cluster, okay. Because I worry a little bit about some of the, you know, the narrow lots that we have, so we don't have to worry about that. They're generally clustered. Okay, then you, yes.
My only concern with that, and I get the reason why we do it, but mail delivery takes place kind of all times of day. And now it does extend to Saturday and Sunday because USPS delivers Amazon on Sunday. So if we do that, we're going to block parking kind of all the time.
Does Amazon go in a mailbox, or does it have to be door delivered?
It can be.
It does?
Yeah, they have contracts.
Okay.
So not that we shouldn't explore it, but it's a wider range of hours that we're probably considering.
Yeah, and it's a, you know, it's a really targeted thing. I haven't heard from thirty people, but it does seem like, I thought it was going to be an easy answer for this resident of like, yes, absolutely, that's in code thirty-one dash three, four, nine, eight, seven, you know? But it, to me, it just seems like something that should be restricted. I get it that the limitations might be hard, because, yeah, you're right. I have gotten home from council meetings at this time of night last, as recently as last month, to see the mail truck delivering, but I think.
Well, we also think people know better and will do it.
I, I think one of the other reasons it probably doesn't come up a ton is because, first of all, usually the mail vehicles are pretty small, so they can maneuver well, but also mailboxes are typically right next to your driveway. So if you're blocking the mailbox, chances are, unless you're, you know, off the driveway, that you could be blocking a driveway too. So typically, people will leave. They'll, you know, common courtesy is to leave a little space there for the mail. But so that could be another reason, and, you know, in a city that doesn't have a lot of overly excessive on-street parking issues, I think it's, it's fitting, if you're interested in an ordinance, to consider it, because, you know, if the city maybe had, you know, all kinds of problems finding on-street parking, and you're always congested with, in that respect, maybe it would be less enticing. But I don't get the sense Carver's like that. Maybe there are certain areas where on-street parking is more, more common than others, but, you know, that's a policy call. So.
I, I would support it. I, I do live in Spring Creek, and our mailboxes are clustered. I think it's like five or six mailboxes per little stand, so it's not, you know, like a mailbox every twenty feet or something. It's, you know, a mailbox and then a good, I don't know, forty, fifty feet between them. So it doesn't seem unreasonable.
Is the bluff still single? Like, mailboxes per you, per?
It's not always a single, although there might be up to four.
Okay.
But they typically are right up to somebody's driveway, so a little self-police.
Yeah, no, no, that makes sense.
We've always got someone who's going to be unreasonable.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think it's just, again, the unreasonable case if someone's parked there for three days, right? I think we should be able to get a little teeth in there.
Okay. I hear three people saying yes.
We're happy to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forward with it. Okay. Let's see. I think that is it for me. Big kudos to Brenda and Michelle. And I see you guys screwing around during a meeting. I know you're working especially hard, and I appreciate you guys tonight, so thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I don't get any of them tonight. I, can I make a second?
Okay, well, Percy wants to stay here later so that we can redo this. We got a motion to council member refreshment and a second by council member Muck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening, everybody.